Good evening. Today is Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. An up call of Fairfield Township Board of Trustees regular meeting to order. Ms. Schultz, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee? Trustee Harcomile?
Here.
Trustee McAdie?
Here.
Could you all please stand and Deacon Rick Reader is going to give the indication and pledge allegiance.
Loving God, please instruct us and teach us in the way that we should conduct this meeting for the Fairfield Township trustees. Lord, please counsel us with your loving eye on us. Let our aims in this meeting be aligned with your direction. Let our plans be orchestrated by you. Father, let your will be done in this meeting so that this can be a meeting that is based upon your desires for us. Whatever it is that you want to result from this meeting, Lord, please let it happen. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay, the first item is presentation, so we have no presentations tonight. We have no witnesses this evening as well, so we'll move into items for board discussion. The first item is the AARP money potential uses. Ms. Schultz?
Yes, so the county distributed the last of their ARP money and it went to several different cities and municipalities, but the 13 townships in Butler County each got $150,000. This money has to be spent, it says, used for disparate populations with the respective community and to mitigate the needs of the underserved. So I'm looking for some projects from the board in order to spend this money according to its use. I have to submit the project to the county before we get the money and record the money in their portal and then they reimburse us. So I was looking for projects. We don't have to decide now. I believe it's like December of 2026 before the money has to be spent, so you have plenty of time, but I thought I would at least bring it up so we could get it spent and get something decided. That's all I have.
Is that something that we could use for roads or gutter or drainage in the Five Points area? I know we have a lot of projects over there. Is perhaps that's something, I'm not looking for an answer right this second, but perhaps that's something we can think about.
Trustee McAdie, any thoughts?
Well, and we have, we have some work being done up there now, right? We're in the process of.
Right.
Playground, plus we have some drainage issues we're addressing. So I don't know if any of those might qualify for it.
Do we already have grants for any of those?
We don't have, they're not 100%.
Yeah, maybe we can match with it. That's possible.
Were they 100% plan?
Yeah.
They're not 100%.
No, they're not 100%. Yeah, 10% match, so we could pay the match with that if Mr. Bobbiere says it's okay?
I would say yes.
Okay.
The other thing I thought, you know, we spend a certain amount of time cleaning up the area. We spend resources. This might also give us another chance to talk about having another one this year or maybe two a year until we can make some little inroads. Maybe we use some of the money for that. Do a, you know, in-depth cleaning block by block or at least get some indication.
Sort of like the Rock the Block that was done several years ago. We concentrated in the Five Points area.
Right. And of course, that's probably not the only area that qualifies, but that's what comes to mind. You know, we drive through, I drive through on a regular basis and I can always see some of the properties need help, so if that's what the money's for, then maybe we could use it for that.
So perhaps, Mr. Goins, you could think about that and think about how we could best utilize that if that's appropriate in that area. From a zoning perspective.
I had some discussions with Mr. Goins and Mrs. Von der Har about this and, you know, we're potentially receiving the property where the Five Points Garden was, Unity Garden. And if that property is more suitable for a basketball court as opposed to the other properties that may not be topographical or the land is really conducive to having a basketball court on it, maybe we could put one there. It would add another park up there, so place for residents to go. So that's another idea I think we should look into if the other parcels of land aren't conducive to having a basketball court there. I think that's an easy area where residents can go and have activity. I know that there's no, there's no court on the, what corner is that? Fairfax and Lenox, right? So I think we could also research that, but I guess we have time to tell them what we're going to use it for.
Yes, we do.
Do we have to have a use set up for them to consider us or they're just giving us the money, we just can't use it until?
Right, that, that's already been decided. We definitely get the money. I just have to do quarterly reporting with them when we start spending money. So, and we have, like I said, we have time, so no hurry. I just wanted to bring it to your attention so you guys could think about it and, you know, see whatever you want to do with it.
Maybe that's the discussion we have, we start talking about the budget for 2024. If there's a project that we want to earmark for, knowing that we can also add the $150,000 to it, then maybe that's something that we consider. We start talking about that.
Yeah, there's huge drainage issues up there and for 25 years, we've been slowly working our way through, but there's still a lot needs to be done. Is it, the park that's going to be done next in Five Points is, Belmont, is that going to have a basketball court?
We initially had preliminary plans to include a basketball court. We had conversations with the playground team and they recommended us talk to a civil engineer upon very preliminary conversations with the civil engineer. The cost just wouldn't, would it make sense for the budget that we kind of, that we allocated for the project? So we've scratched the basketball court from that for the plan at this point.
Because too much.
Too much. Too much earthwork and then just kind of how the site is laid out, we'd had to include some retention on site and there's not enough space for the retention. And then once you get into that, additional engineering costs and for a little park, so it just didn't make sense to dollarize.
When you said about the garden coming back to us, we still own the property, right?
Yes, but I mean, it's, we're not going to use it for a garden anymore, so we could potentially put a park there.
Yeah, right. Or we could, you know, sell it, see if somebody wants to build a house on it.
Right. Any other comments? So let's revisit this maybe in December, give it a couple months to think about, have another discussion in December about some ideas, what we might want to do with the money. Not that we have to make any decisions, but at least submit some ideas to Mr. Goins and Mrs. Von der Har for them to start working on some price points and what have you, so we can start making an educated decision on that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. The next item is police vehicles. Chief Chavalli?
We should have a report authored October 2nd from me, pretty much detailing everything involved in the purchase of hopefully four vehicles. In short, we will be purchasing two unmarked and two marked units. As you are aware, buying a car is a changed animal these days. So we have research cars that are available out there. The Ford SUV Explorers may not be made any longer, is what we have found out. Agencies have ordered our way back to 22 and they've not come. They don't know if they're going to continue the line or not, so the Ford, for intentional purposes right now, are not available. We have looked at other vehicles that are available for the marked units and they are the Dodge Durangos and they're cheaper, would have been cheaper than the Fords if the Fords would have been available. So far, the Durangos are holding out fairly well. A lot of the permits have gone to, and I'm sure you've seen the sheriff's office driving them around. Other cities in the area have driving, have been driving around. We also researched the Chevy Tahoe, just too big, too big a vehicle, a little bit more expensive. As it relates to the unmarked, I'm asking also for two unmarks, one for Captain O'Neil and I, and then we're going to send, switch ours over to detectives. Right now, we don't have a backup vehicle and since last week, I think it was the last time that I talked to Ms. Von der Har about the vehicles, we had a vehicle go down and that's the great Charger that I used to drive, the detective was driving. The cost to bring that vehicle back is going to be about $25.53 to be exact. We're holding off until I get some direction today. At the minimum, we're going to have to put brakes on it because it's really not drivable. The brakes went out on it. So in short, two unmarks, two marks, and then we will get rid of four vehicles and those would be a 2008 and a 2011 high mileage Ford Crown Victorias, one 2014 high mileage 17 unmarked Dodge Charger is the one that I mentioned to you, that's in, that's at Firestone right now. Two white 2017 Ford Explorers will be sold. And then we would be able to have a spare vehicle. Right now, we do not have a spare vehicle and Detective Dutra is driving the white Ford truck home because we don't have anything else right now. Our white Fords, our, mine's got 86,000, it runs fine, they hold up pretty well. The others that are, the marked units are about 90,000 miles. As you know, usually if you get to about 100,000, that's when you guys spend some money on them, such as a Dodge Charger that we need to spend 25.55 on it. The report is detailed enough to where it has all the information, including the accessories that need to be placed in the vehicles. I'm sure you remember that the last unmarks bought in 2018 were Ford Fusions, $18,186 and they were state bid, and then maybe 11,000 in accessories. The new marked, unmarked Dodge Durangos are fairly expensive and they go for, let me see here, 45804. Those are, that's the fleet price. Those are available, they're holding two for us until we tell them otherwise. We have tried to look for anything else like and similar and they're actually more expensive. And theoretically, there is a base model, you can't find, they're not going to order it for you because they're not selling. So they only order one that's selling it anymore. And the reason is because they can't, pretty much. So that's where we're at. I'm sure you'll have some questions. The total price for this whole thing is 228,186, 220,000, $186. And you have attachments that has Jake Sweeney's information and other pictures of what the vehicles would look like with the accessories.
These are all gas vehicles?
Yes.
What about hybrids?
I'm not convinced on that technology yet.
Yeah.
Not for police vehicles. Yeah, and sooner or later, those batteries are not, what happens from the batteries? You know what, I think in time maybe, but I'd like to see a little bit more time go by to see what happens with the batteries. We can look at electrics. Just kidding.
Chief, what is that timeframe on when, how long vehicles are taking to get in?
Well, right now, we don't really know. When we spoke to the salesman, the, the unmarked are on, on the lot, in the lot, and they're basically going to be picked up if we go that route. So the mark, we would order in, say, October, November-ish, and then before the UAW strike, it would be probably March or April. Now, I just looked at the internet and Stellantis, which is now Dodge, is also shutting down, That's the best answer I got for you. And then if, if we order them in March or April, it's about three months after that, if everything goes well, but the strike keeps on moving, so it's a, it's a moving target.
Can you use the unmarked for marks?
We are, yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, we have two mine and Sergeant McCloskey has one and then we're going to sell two, but keep two also, because we have four that are marked, that are white, so those two will be kept. And so far, they're the better car that we've had.
So you would keep those vehicles until the mark would come in?
Yeah, we, we would keep all four whites, you know, with overheads. When we get two new ones, we take two out, sell two, and then still keep the two white ones and then maybe next year, hopefully things will be better, easier to buy, then next year we'll start replacing the other two.
I don't see a resolution tonight, so what, what do you need from us?
Approval of purchase and order also.
Is it in here?
No, there is no resolution. Yeah, if you can make a motion, I believe, Mr. Bobbiere is advised to make a motion.
I'll make a motion if you want me to. I make a motion to move forward with purchase of the other four vehicles?
Second?
Thank you.
So I just want to clarify for the public.
Sure, sure.
You're going to be able to get two of them very soon?
Yes. And those are 2023s.
Okay.
Well, we order, say, for example, if it's this week or next, or next week, whatever, those who, we order now, but they will be 2024.
And you would put these 23s in as the unmarked?
Two.
Two of them?
Yes, and then two marks.
And then would you put those in to, who they're eventually attended to, intended for?
Right.
And then your vehicles would be put in for?
They're going to be passed down the line.
Okay.
Capital on the ears, which is a blue Fusion, and then the white one that's out there would be passed along to others.
And they are unmarked right now or are they marked?
Yeah, mine's unmarked and, I mean, we have lights, we have lights, but they are both unmarked.
Okay.
And it would be for detective usage. Well, one would go to Detective Dutra who, if you gave me the okay, obviously, we're going to go ahead and start selling these cars as soon as we can, or as soon as we get the new ones in.
Right.
Excuse me, but, so one would go to him and we would have, we have no spares right now. That's why.
Okay, so they'd be in a spares until the other vehicles come in, then you'd sell?
Correct, yes.
And then how long would it take to get the lights put on?
The lights, well, doesn't take long for the unmarks. For the marks, we already have a vendor ready and that's Tri-State, I think it's in closer than we've been using. Is it Monroe? Yeah. So if we can get them in, as soon as we can get them in, they will be ready. So for the unmarks, you know, we can have them without lights until we can get them in, so that's not an issue. For the marks, we would have to make a, you know, an appointment to get them done whenever we know that we're going to get it. But right now, with the UAW strike, we barely know what's going to happen.
Because if we wait until March to order them, we're also having to get in line for all those cars that are not being made right now.
Correct.
Okay.
And we, we know what the price is now, we won't know what the price is anymore.
We know it won't be this price. It'll be more.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Schultz, you call the roll, please.
Trustee McAdie?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harcomile?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Go back to, next item for board discussion is the chief interview process. And I just ask for this to be put on here. I'd like to ask legal counsel this question. Can we submit questions that we would like to be part of the process, the interviews, to you? And then you can then coordinate with Mrs. Von der Har, the chief, maybe to get more And then I would, I feel confident, and this was part of the board discussion, I feel confident of the ones that we submit, that the fire chief and Mrs. Von der Har could formulate those into an interview questionnaire that we have when we start interviewing candidates. I'd love to have your comments on that. Anything? Trustee McAdie, you have any comment on that process or that?
You know, there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, I've already started making a list of my own questions and I figured if you asked the question before I did, I would just skip it and go to the next one.
Well, I think it would be good for us to have a list of questions that we're going to ask so that, and we sort of summarize it together so that we're not having a candidate here for three hours asking questions. And maybe if we submit it to the, the law director, then they can kind of put them all together and then I don't know if it's, if it's where you could, Larry, send them to us and then we could say, I'm not interested in having that question or, or this seems to be very relevant, we should. I just think we need to have, in my opinion, like at most 10 to 12 questions we should be asking these candidates to not overwhelm them and be take, we only have an hour to interview them. I don't want it to be this extremely long, drawn out process. I think probably within the first several questions, we're going to know whether we want this candidate to move on to the next round or not. That's just my opinion. But I'd love to hear everyone's opinion and then let's get this process started because we're interviewing a week from tonight, right?
Week last night.
A week from last night, we're starting. So I have about eight to 10 that I'm interested in having asked, but it doesn't mean that those are the ones that we're going to be asking the candidates. So I would love to submit them to our law director and then he can send what we accumulated back and then I think our fire chief would be an excellent resource to know that's not relevant for a fire chief or that is relevant for a fire chief. Mrs. Von der Har, with her experience, could also weigh in on what is a relevant question and what's not a relevant question. And that way, I think that also protects us. Like, is a fire chief going to say, well, I don't want to work for that company because they're asking these ridiculous questions that have nothing to do with it? Because I've never interviewed a fire chief before. So I'd like to have legitimate questions for these candidates. So is that something that you're interested in doing, submitting some questions to our law director? Or do you just want to Monday wing it as questions that we have?
We'll get better as we go.
Well, maybe we should have the best candidate asked then, I'm just saying. So what are your, what are your feelings on that? What are your thoughts? Anything?
Well, I will have the questions that I'm going to submit. I definitely want them asked.
Okay.
There are some that I feel very strongly about and I will want those to be asked for, for sure. So I would also recommend that maybe if we submit whatever our questions are, that maybe we asterisk the ones that we feel particularly strongly about. The other thing I would ask Larry to do is to make sure that any questions that we submit are in alignment with the EOC guidelines so that we're not asking things that are inappropriate. I mean, there's, there's certain things you cannot ask in an interview and so I would ask you to screen the questions for that. And as far as that process goes, that's fine, I can make that work.
Okay. That's great, well, so let's.
I know you're trying to find somebody to group them and narrow them down and make them more focused. We don't, we don't have to use a law director for that.
No?
I think they were talking about, if I understand correctly, you were all in the session after the meeting and I was going to present the editor's, well, it didn't work out, you were my assistant, you were good for them. And then I was going to make sure that none of the questions were the questions asked, then I would have sent all the questions to the three of you and then you guys could narrow it down to what you wanted. Is that what you, that you were going to do?
That was the original thought and that way, it's also, honestly, I don't want to submit questions to each other and then a candidate say, I don't want public record, both questions are going to be asked and we'd have to grant that public record, but if we keep it within law director, then that's attorney-client privilege, right? And my, in no way, no candidate would have an advantage by getting the questions before the meeting. That's why I wanted to go to the law director, to sort of organize all of them.
Well, I thought maybe that's why, but I wasn't sure. I mean, we don't have to do that, but I understand what you're saying.
Okay. I also would like to have our fire chief look at the questions. I mean, he has experience being a chief a little bit to see if they are relevant or and maybe group them together, like this question five and this question nine are similar, different wording, but similar, and you could group them together. Or maybe one question is a follow-up to somebody else's question. I just, I want to be very professional and very like concise with these applicants to where we look like we know what we're doing to the applicant and it's not too much of a burden on them. And then, you know, if that's okay for the chief to put eyes on them, and then I also think, you know, Mrs. Von der Har is going to have to be in, you know, deal with this, this new fire chief. I think she needs to be in the process as well to give her input. And then at least we have the questions beforehand that we know we're going to ask. And I don't want to try to dominate the interview process by asking my eight questions and there's no time for questions that you guys want to ask, so I just want to make sure that we're all heard.
Well, again, in the past that I've been involved in, you might start off and then everybody has one.
Okay.
Just take turns like that. I mean, really, what we're going to do next week is try to get it down to two or three, right?
Correct.
If possible. And maybe we have to have more time, I don't know.
Okay. So is that something you could do to today's Tuesday? Is that something you could have done by Thursday so he can get those to us on Friday? Is that something you could do? Send it to Larry by then?
I can try.
Okay.
And everybody else?
Yeah, I'm on it already, I'll send tonight. Ready to go. Okay, if you get it on Thursday, could you have it to us by Friday? Close of business Friday, not Friday morning.
You mean this Thursday?
Yes.
Today's Tuesday, right?
Yes, sir. Should be pretty simple, just send in your email with them.
And you forward the email to my assistant, saying, "The client will be sending it back."
Right.
And I will review each question, make sure the client will be impressed.
Well, give us an example of what wouldn't be compliant there.
Date of birth, possibly.
None of us is going to ask that. So what else? I mean.
Marital status, religion, kids.
Take all those out, will you?
I would expect an answer to asking the questions, if they're not compliant, but you can ask people with that.
I don't know, I see.
Plus, it's just a good idea for us to always have an eye on EEOC compliance here in Fairfield Township.
And it does make the questions, I'm given the legal license, they're going to be very complex.
Could you check mine for spelling? Okay.
Well, once his chief sees it, it's not.
No, chief will give you privileges. He's a privilege.
Is he?
Yeah, he's an apartment manager.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
And before we go any further, just a couple of items maybe we can talk about tonight or going forward, we could talk about. I think we ought to consider putting some security cameras on the park, maybe this building. I mentioned, mentioned that to, uh, other people earlier and I just wondered what you thought. I'd like to make sure we have a camera on the, on the veterans of the world in case whatever happens.
I'm sorry, was there?
Some kind of security.
May to the veterans?
No, I'm just saying, I thought of this prior to this, before what's happened in the last week around the world. I'm just saying, security-wise, it would be, I think it'd be good for us to have a security in around the township building. Uh, we already have it at the police station down there or not. Maybe the fire station too, just again, we ought to consider that.
Okay.
So, so put that out there as a topic that we can talk about.
Okay.
Get some more information on and, um.
So would you like the, would you like the administrator and assist administrator to get some pricing together for some security on this building? Do we not have any cameras in this building whatsoever? Okay.
I don't think we have any inside or out.
Okay.
But again, the park, um, whatever else we think needs to be.
Okay.
Secure, as secure as we can be anyway. Maybe the park at, uh, in Five Points.
Okay.
Maybe the park at the police station. I don't know how big of. Span we can get over there, but just to keep an eye on what's going on.
Okay. Yeah. If you could put something together and have it available for our November meeting, just what that cost would look like. I don't know if we need to have some, some professional come out.
I reached out to a consultant earlier this week, uh, with questions about security.
Okay.
We'll, uh, still waiting on the call, so I'll kind of hone in on the requests a little bit more, including cameras.
Great.
Also, uh, I've seen some advertising for the event for next year, bigger and better and all this. Uh, I've been very unhappy about the fact that we sold beer and I've asked for additional information. I've yet to get it. Um, I don't, I don't think we should be selling beer, whether it's Groot doing it on behalf of us or the township doing it. And I certainly don't think we ought to be doing a gun rep. And I'm all about community events. I've already voiced, I was very disappointed in those couple of things that happened and, I'd like to be on the record and I'd like for us to set the policy that we're not gonna, we're not gonna allow alcohol and we're not gonna sell alcohol in the township parks.
I would like to give just a little bit of feedback about that.
And maybe it's with approval at least, so, so we know what's happening and we have a little more control. But I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's right. This is a dialogue. It's okay. I, I would say that so many of the things that we do in this township, so many events are focused around kids, families. Not many of the things that we do are focused around just the adults that we have living in our township that are just citizens. They don't have children. And so to have events that are centered around the adult residents of our community, I'm fine with. If that includes adult activities, drinking of alcohol to not excess, um, I'm in favor of. Uh, I would, I know so many other communities that are neighboring us have these events and it adds the quality of life for those residents. Some of them are around holidays and they have bands coming in, they're selling beer. Now, I, I don't know the logistics of and the legalities of who's selling the beer at these events. I know it's on public property. Down at Fairfield, they have the Greens. They have, they have all kinds of music events there and beers and wine sales. As long as it's done respectfully and, and done within the legal limits, I'm in favor of it. Because I think we need to give some of our adult residents in this community some events that they're not driving over to Westchester for an event in their public grounds, having some beers and then driving all the way back here. Or taking them tax money and disposable income into that community and spending it there. I, I think we need to give our adult residents something to do. As long as it's legal and ethical, I think we should do it. I do agree, Trustee McAbby, that we should at least know what's being sold, what's being auctioned off. I, I agree with you there. I do think that there should be no surprises to the trustees about what's going on at an event. And I think we've now set those expectations because we weren't sure what this event was gonna have, so we didn't have expectations. But now we can set expectations about trustees should be informed about what events are gonna happen at our township-sponsored community events. As long as we are informed and it's legal and ethical and moral, I, I think, I think it should happen. But I agree with you, the trustees should know about it and not be surprised about it. Any discussion about that, Trustee McAbby?
Well, I did ask some people, um, friends and neighbors, um, when this whole controversy erupted because I wanted to find out what their perspectives were on, on beer sales at an event. For those of you that might not know, we had an event a few weeks ago. It was a car show and we bought in a band called Cassette Junkies. Uh, there was, uh, some activities during the daytime. Playground was packed out. Uh, it was kind of, it was a very nice event. And there was a, a beer truck there. And so I, I, when this erupted, I, I consulted with some of my friends and neighbors and I said, what, what's your thought on this? What do you think about having a beer truck? And quite honestly, they just kind of looked at me like, why is this even, why, why are you asking me this? So they, they didn't, they weren't bothered by it. And in fact, one of my neighbors even said, we'd be disappointed if there wasn't a beer truck there. So I, for, for the, for the people that I discussed this with, they weren't particularly concerned about it. Um, I do share the concern that we don't want people drinking to excess, but I think that the police department did a fine job there, being on site, being very visible, interacting with the public. Uh, and so I did, I did not see any issues with overconsumption. I, I don't know that, I, I trust that those operating the event were not over-serving and they were keeping an eye on, on people that were coming through there. So, uh, I don't, I don't see a problem with it as long as it's controlled and that it's responsible.
And you know, I, I understand both of those and I've talked to people too and, they were mixed about it, you know? And maybe, um, we started selling beer, what, twelve o'clock? Something like that, twelve o'clock? And sold it until nine o'clock. Uh, most places, of course, would have cut off before the closing, the, the, the band should have been done by nine, I think, based on the time it's on. But anyway, those types of things. And, um, they, I could hear, I could hear the band from my house. What is that, two and a half miles? So I had some people complaining about that. I don't know if there's some way of turning it, facing it in a different direction or, or what. You're gonna have outdoor activities, you're gonna have a certain amount of noise that goes along with it. The other thing would be, you mentioned the Greens and Westchester. Those are in the middle of commercial areas and, uh, we are not.
Not Fairfield. They're right in the middle of a subdivision.
It's built, built inside the, there's houses down the street, right? But, but you got the Greens there. Most of that is commercial. The same thing with downtown Westchester. We're sitting right here in a dry precinct in a, you know.
Do we have a dry precinct?
Yes, we do.
Like we have a, like legal?
We have several dry precincts.
Like we have dry precincts in Fairfield Township?
Yes, we do.
Are you just referring?
Legally?
Trustee McAbby, you're just referring to, we have precincts where we're not selling alcohol.
Right.
I mean legally, we don't identify them as.
Do we identify as a dry precinct, Larry? What is the definition of a dry precinct?
Well, let me explain what I think then. And that is that the voters haven't said it's okay to sell in my precinct. We do have some of those.
Okay.
I don't think we're looking at putting a bar in or anything like that. That would probably require some sort of petition to the community. But legally, are, are we restricted from, are we a dry precinct here?
Well, that would not apply to the township. I mean, I, my opinion, it's legal and I could say that as long as, you could, you could bring those up here and stuff. So that was my opinion. I don't have, and I, I think that opinion I support a whole lot of people. I mean, feel alive, you know, you should, uh, you should, uh, but if those things are captured, just if you can legally have alcohol sold.
Uh, and we in the township purchased a permit, correct? Still waiting to find out who signed the application.
Well, then wasn't there something about, um, didn't the beer distributor have the appropriate licensing too? Or the people that provided the beer, Mrs. Von der Har, didn't that, wasn't there a couple layers of protection there for that?
Shelley, do you have a copy of the application?
I do not. Sorry.
Is there a copy of the application in the township?
I have it to see if I can.
So you just did it online?
It was online.
You paid for it with a credit card?
Actually, uh, actually, Trustee Burden reimbursed it for that.
Yeah, but you paid for it with a credit card?
I did.
And again, that, that permit was in the name of the township and yet the township did not sell the beer. That doesn't sound exactly the way it should be to me. I understand Mr. Burden has reimbursed the township for the forty dollar permit. And I appreciate that, but again, those are items that should have been taken care of before the event.
This is all good feedback and I think that going forward, we plan the next event, we should look at all these, these ideas and, um, make sound decisions. I think, um, when we start planning the next event, we should, uh, have some sort of committee meeting to discuss these items. I don't wanna devalue your opinion and your point of view, Trustee McAbby, um, because I, I understand where you're coming from. I, I just see things differently and, um, I'm sure that we can move forward and find, uh, a, a good way to have events, quality events for our residents. So maybe we can look at adjusting the way the band is, is, um, is facing, I guess we face it towards Butler Tech, only the horses on the horse farm will hear it once it leaves our property. Because it is farmland and, and, but then the houses on Milliken will also hear it. So.
I'm sure they did anyway, but, but again, you're gonna get a certain amount of that.
Yeah.
Somebody has suggested why we didn't move the event to Bridgewater, back there where they had to do their own thing. And, uh, and I thought that was a, you've got better parking, you've got better environment, more control maybe, um, just a suggestion.
I think we should look at.
Do we know how much money was made? How much profit there was? Somebody asked me what the money was gonna go for and I couldn't answer that either.
The money from the car show?
Money from the, from the event. Was it the beer sales or?
Well, to my understanding, when we put on the, the concert, it wasn't really as a fundraiser, it was an event to give our residents a concert in the park, right? It was the added car show, well, it, not really added, it was planned at the same time, but the car show was run, I believe, by our local firefighters and they were raising money for something, but that, that wasn't part of the, um, part of the, uh, the township wasn't part of the fundraising effort. It was the, the Fire Association that was doing that.
Of, of the, whatever the money that was raised.
Right, because the township didn't collect money, to my understanding, did not collect money to attend the event, so it wasn't listed as a fundraiser. Now, whatever the car show, whatever funds that garnered and whatever funds the beer sales garnered, I don't know that answer. If it even made a profit, I don't know.
I mean, the, the report that we received showed over twenty thousand, the township paid over twenty thousand dollars in expenses. Again, just trying to understand if there was money made, what it's gonna go for. You know, what kind of budget did we have? And the bills started getting paid. I asked Shelley about, uh, what the budget, you know, how much money was in the budget and she told me the line item that was there and I checked that out. I don't think it was twenty thousand, but, you know, it was, uh, thousands of dollars. So again, I was just trying to get a whole picture here on how it all.
Yeah, definitely think it's a good idea to set a budget before we have the next event. Make sure we know, I, I, I mean, like, we weren't sure, and, and that's my understanding, I don't know this to be a hundred percent fact, but we weren't sure, well, how many police are we gonna have? What kind of crowds gonna show up? I don't wanna have a, you know, ten thousand people show up in the park for a concert and not have enough officers ready to address that. And I don't know how many people showed up, but, um, I'm sure there were discussions between administrator Von der Har and the police chief and the fire chief as far as we need to be prepared for what we're not prepared for. Something that we don't even know might happen. We need to be ready to respond to it. And so maybe next year, we don't need as much police and fire. I, I don't know. I don't know that, I don't know that answer. But I'm sure when we go to have a meeting about the next event, those things will be discussed, like, okay, well, we had about this many people show up, which would mean, mean, mean that we need this many firefighters and police on duty. But understanding that it could get bigger, so we need to be prepared to bring this many more in. So I'm sure those things will be discussed. The first time you do something, it's never gonna be perfect. You're kinda doing it like what you think would be the best practice and then you learn by experience. I remember the first time we had a father-daughter dance in Fairfield City School District. We hit it at a middle school. Like a thousand dads and dollars showed up and we go, where are we gonna pull these people? And we ran out of everything. We ran out of drinks and cookies and, and we ran out of, uh, photography time and we ran out of everything. And so the first time you do something, it's never gonna be perfect. You learn from that and you try to plan accordingly. The second time may not be better. There may be things, people heard what a great time it was and now we have so many more people showing up and so many more cars showing up, so many more people named the park to be shuttled and what have you. Right, okay, well, now we need to adjust for the third one. I think it's the process, as long as we're making sound decisions based on what's the best for our residents and any other guests that we have. I fully trust our administrative team to make those decisions. And, uh, again, I, I thought they did a great job. I thought our firefighters did a great job, uh, with limited practice of doing this event and, uh, I thought it went off really well. I mean, I know a couple food trucks ran out of food.
Good for them.
Yeah. So, um, I think we had some sponsors to try to offset some of the cost. Maybe next year, we'll get even more sponsors, offset more of the cost. I mean, always in your first year, you're not always gonna hit a home run when it comes to finances. But it could be in the future that we have so many sponsors that actually becomes a moneymaker for us. And if that has a problem, or if that becomes a, um, a result of that, then we need to start making decisions. What are we gonna do with the money that we make from this event? But to me, for the time being, it's a service event. It's like we're giving our residents something to do to keep them in our neighborhood so they can enjoy ourselves on our property, because that's what their taxpayers are going for, going towards.
Well, when a guest comes in, if they come in, they might stop over at Bridgewater Falls or Walmart or Home Depot on the way over, which helps to drive business to the township. Or as they're driving into the township, uh, maybe they have an opportunity to see the great, uh, shopping and restaurants that we have. So I think it's another thing that builds community identity here for Fairfield Township. And plus just having it out here with the Veterans Memorial and the park. I mean, it was so touching to see, I saw grandparents taking little ones over to the memorial and looking at the stones and touching them and talking about them. I saw kids all over the park playing. It was just, it was just such a, it was a brilliant afternoon for them to see what we have here in Fairfield Township. afternoon for them to see what we have here in Fairfield Township. I was very proud of the team, very proud of everyone's effort that we put into that. Uh, staff did a fantastic job, considering it was the first time out, it was, it was very well executed. And we're going to learn from stuff, we're going to learn from stuff every time and I think that is really the, one of the best signs of a good organization is we know that everything might not be perfect, but we know that we can learn from that and we can do continuous improvement and we can make it even better next year.
And I do like the fact that it's near the Veterans Memorial since it's tied into Patriot Day, which is the direct result of 9/11. And the fact that we had military go out and seek justice for the attacks on our country and one of the benches out there now, who wasn't there for the event, is the war on terror. Um, so I think it's appropriate that it was held next to our memorial.
And I'd like to see that piece of 9/11 steel that we have right over there come out next year so that people can see it, that was discussed in the committee. Um, I'd like to see that come out so that people can take a look at that, they can put hands on it and they, it really, I think, would bring it back.
Any other items you'd like to discuss, trustee?
Well, I wanted to add something to the agenda, I could have made a motion to add the resolution for increase of police officers' pay to the agenda.
Um, I think, um, I think we are going to go, maybe we should go to executive session to discuss that. So would you like to amend the agenda to add executive session to discuss that?
Well, you think we need to do an executive session?
I think we should have a conversation with our law director and our police chief and the trustees. Every other time we discussed pay, we were in executive session discussing it. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, I'll make the motion to add that to the agenda.
Second. Any other questions? Uh, and we will add that to, at the end.
Okay. Okay. Trustee MacCabe?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that motion passes, so we will have executive session, um, at the end of when I call executive session, I will give the LRC reason why we're going into it. Okay? Any other comments or would move on?
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, we have it here. Next, we're going into communication, this is the portion of the meeting where you, the residents of Fairfield Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the board. Please know that this time has been set aside from the board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The board will not engage in dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to three minutes each. We had one person sign up and it's Maria Tangi.
Hi, everybody. Um, excuse me if I cry, I'm a little sad today. Two years ago, I had this wild idea to start a community garden here in Fairfield Township at the Knob and Five Points. Um, with grace and encouragement, you all were very supportive and were willing to help me out however you could within the parameters of government. Unfortunately, my abilities to care for the garden in the ways I would like are not available to me right now. And I heard you guys talk about it earlier, so you know, um, life's had a few turns and many of those turns were my choices. Um, however, I thought I would be able to navigate my new life's things and the garden and it's just not possible. Um, I feel in a measure of gratitude to know that I live in this community. Um, one that is willing to do good, to be supportive of their members and to care about its people, um, such as this community does. During this time, uh, with the garden I've run, I've learned a lot, actually. Sorry, I can't see with my glasses and my tears. Okay. There is this, okay, during this time I've run with incredible amount, there was this point in education where you can only be taught so much. Sometimes you have to really experience it. Um, with the garden, I've gotten to understand deeper how, how local government works, which is incredible. Um, I didn't really understand it in school, but by being in this process, by coming to these meetings, I've been able to like learn how this works and even share it with people in my community, in other communities and help other people know maybe what's also going on in their world. I can't tell you how many times people are like, what does that thing happen over there? And I'm like, ooh, I know, because I've been in the, you know, having the township meetings, I know what's going on, like, or when people say, how does that happen? And I'm like, well, the beer is diseased, and then you have to do that, and then you have to do this, because I come here, right? And this all started with, um, wanting to do this community garden. So I learned that, um, and my daughter is interested in how to be in here more often and seeing how our town is run and how other communities are run, because she wants to go into law. Also, um, in, in with this garden, I'm, I lost track of myself here. There was this idea to have a community involvement with the garden and support, which I was, which was unable to be fulfilled enough for me to be able to work with it to my necessities, right? And, um, I met a lot of people, I met a lot of people and I've learned, um, stories from them about living in Fairfield Township most or at least not all of their lives. I might have to hear about their struggles and their, you know, achievements and everyone who would stop by would tell me how much they love it being here, but I wouldn't find really the involvement because most of our community members up at Five Points are already gardeners. They have a food forest in their backyard, it was amazing. So many people come by, they're like, oh, I love this garden, you know, and, um, anyway, a little sidetracked. Um, okay. Can't believe I'm so emotional. I, I learned that. I'm sorry, I made lifelong friends in the community garden, some people who are from Fairfield Township, some people that moved here from Oregon. Um, I have a friend now that I met who started working with the garden with me who has been helping count, right? And so people drive up to come and help, but it just hasn't been enough. And, and one other thing, I got this amazing story that I can tell people, like, hey, yeah, I did this thing where I went to my town and I said, hey, can you do this? And they said, yes. And when I tell people that, they're floored, they're just like, wait, you just, you just asked and it happened? Yes. Um, unfortunately, it didn't happen the way you wanted to, not yet. So my hope is someday that if someone else, even in the day, asks such a loud ask of you all, that you would be just as open to the possibilities again. And after hearing everybody talking today, I know that you understand that sometimes the first time isn't the right, you know, it's going to work, but it'll get better as we move forward. Um, I'm planning to be involved in this community just as much as I can be, I'm looking with the fire chief at the, um, well, not the, but you know, with, um, Fire Core, which is amazing, I recommend everybody join it. You get to work in the smokehouse, kids love it. Um, involving the community because I love it and, um, I just want to break from the responsibility of the garden ones and I just want to take you off an opportunity to try something so wild. And, um, that's all, I just, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking that on and for doing that in our community. I am so very proud of you. I'm proud of what that did for Fairfield Township, I'm proud of what it did for Five Points. So from my heart, thank you so much for doing that.
Okay, we have no one else signed up for communications, so we'll move into committee reports. Trustee MacCabe at TID?
Well, the TID met this week and, um, the big item on there was what I told you last month was going to be on there and that's that the North Hamilton Cross was moving into the next step. And, um, because Von der Har's email summed it up fairly well. It's a $3.4 million steel engineering, figuring out the route, all those types of things, environmental, all that. It's going to take about a year, maybe a little longer. That's all good news as far as the project goes. It's down to three, three routes, two of those routes cross the bottom farm. So if, if you, um, know anybody that's involved in any of this, this would be another good time for you to tell them how you feel about that. We meet again in November. Um, that's about it.
Okay. Any questions or comments for trustee MacCabe? Uh, well, thank you for leading the effort on this and, uh, I know the Bottoms are very happy with your involvement, so thank you.
You know, the, uh, steel concerns me that two thirds is around, you know, two out of three cross the bottom farm. Uh, the other thing I forgot to mention is my appointment is up at the end of December, so I need another resolution to be appointed for two more years and I'm willing to serve if you guys are willing to. Pay me the same thing you didn't pay. Zero.
Um, yeah, I know that, uh, those two routes are also the two most expensive routes and the two hardest to, to, uh, pull off. So hopefully that sways opinion on sending it to that third route.
I would think that would be, uh, at least considered, but, um, they mentioned 100, 150 million, that's a, that's a big difference.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Um, Ms. Harkemaier, the EMA, OKI, CLOUT?
Uh, nothing to report on EMA, we did have that meeting last month. Uh, OKI will be this Thursday morning and I have a CLOUT meeting coming up on Monday.
Okay, great. Any questions for trustee Harkemaier? All right, thank you. Move into fiscal officers, recommendations or reports. Ms. Schultz?
Um, just a few things. One is we got our, um, real property tax roll back a few weeks ago, um, 349,000, so that was nice. Uh, the second thing is, as we've already mentioned, the budget's coming up, um, I will have that to you by mid-November. Please review it, ask me any questions and be prepared to approve in December. If you have any input on it or comments, please let me know that. And the last thing is, next week is the Butler County Township Association annual dinner, like we have every year that, um, I plan, and our speaker is, um, Phil Clayton from the EMA, he's going to talk about the eclipse and how that's going to affect our communities. So if you'd like to join, I'd love to help you. That's all I have.
You have my RSVP.
I do, yes.
So everyone here has RSVPs too, yes? That's going?
Yes, that's going, yes.
Okay. That's great. And it's across the street?
Yep, at Butler Tech.
At the Cafe Lee?
Yes.
The newly renovated?
Yes, I did hear it was newly renovated, but it seems like five less people, so that's not very good for my benefit.
Oh, it holds five less people?
Yes.
Well, I guess we'll have to have a lottery system who gets in the.
As of right now, my RSVPs are down, way down from the prior year, so I don't think there'll be as many people. I know there's some other things going on that night, so, but they're lost because it's some good food.
Yes. Crazy. Okay, the next item is, uh, um, to recommend the motion to suspend the reading of the minutes for the following meetings, regular meeting on September 12, 2023, and the trustee's special meeting on September 26, 2023. Is there a motion to suspend?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Harkemaier, yes. Trustee MacCabe?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes, and that motion is approved. I move to approve the minutes of those two meetings. Any questions or comments?
And, uh, the copy that I received did not have the attachments to it, maybe we should have the attachments with them all the time.
Okay.
I'm sure you're posting that together, but.
Yeah, we, and we do keep it in our official binder.
Yeah, it referred me to it, but it wasn't there.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee MacCabe?
Yes.
And that motion is adopted. Next motion is, uh, recommend motion to approve payments for the bill on the fiscal officer.
So moved.
Second.
I heard Ms. Harkemaier, second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee MacCabe?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes, and that motion passes. Administrator's report, Mrs. Von der Har?
The only things I have were from the weekend, I wanted to thank the, um, chiefs, public works and all the employees who helped with the movie night on Friday, which is for the school next door, and then on Saturday they helped with the Home Depot Safety Day event. So, um, thank you all for, and thank you for everyone working, a lot of, uh, people put a lot of effort in and represent us well and, um, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
The movie night was actually a north elementary event, it was not a township event.
Correct.
But they held it in the park.
Yes, and they used, um, they asked if they could use equipment and, uh, so the bounce houses around and they, they did, they volunteered, but I still appreciate the effort because it was mainly fire that set all that up and, and they're always very gracious and, uh, helpful to me.
Right. Yeah, because someone asked me, why, why didn't the township advertise? I'm like, well, it wasn't a township event, it was an elementary school event, so.
Okay.
Any questions for Mrs. Von der Har? Okay, we move on to, there's no motions, so we'll move on to resolutions. Can we have the first resolution, please?
Resolution 23130, approving open producer balances.
Let's adopt.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee MacCabe?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. Okay, the next resolution, please.
Resolution 23131, authorizing the administrator to sign the project agreement with Butler County for the King Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project, and this is in regards to the CDBG funding from the county.
Let's adopt.
Second.
What, what percent are we paying? 10, 20?
We have a 10% match, let me check. So 10% of, of 21,000?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee MacCabe?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23132, authorizing the administrator to sign the project agreement with Butler County for the Peter Avenue Stormwater Improvement Project, also CDBG funding, and the match on this is approximately 30,000.
Let's adopt.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Um, why don't you submit those to the county for that 150,000, that's 50,000 right there? I don't, I don't know if they'll do it or not.
If you guys tell me to, I'll be glad to.
Well, ask and see.
I don't mind that.
That's fine.
Sorry, go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, so, I don't know if we want to, uh, pay that yet. Typically, there's the 10%, we don't always have to pay our 10%, depending on how the budget or how the project finalizes. So sometimes we don't always pay it. But if we give it to them, we probably will.
So we have time before we have to use that money anyways, right? So can't we wait till the end of the project and see how that goes?
Because we can ask for reimbursement.
Yes, and once we pay it, right, we, right, we can submit it as a payment.
Okay.
Because they're not going to pay us until we decide anyway.
That's where it would be anyway, right?
Yes.
They say that to the list of things that we will discuss in December.
Do you have a time frame?
These two grants.
2024 for the installation of these projects.
Did we call the roll yet?
We did not.
You call the roll, please.
Trustee MacCabe?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that, uh, resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23133, authorizing the administrator to enter into contract with TR Gear Landscaping for the Fairfield Township Princeton Road Medians at a total amount of $13,995.
Let's adopt.
Second. Any questions or comments?
We can get some other bids?
We requested additional bids and we did not receive any on this. We've, uh, utilized TNR for several years, they've been excellent to work with and And the last time we did receive bids, they were not competitive, the other bids. So they've been the best price.
But you did try to get...
We saw additional bids, yeah.
And have they replaced those trees from last year?
No, I contacted him, and he said that he was going to come out and take a look at them. That's the last that I'd heard. That was right after you mentioned it to me. For the ones I read, Schaefer's Park.
We need to follow up with that.
I think the medians look spectacular. I think it's a real source of pride for Fairfield Township. Driving there, seeing the banners that are up and just how nice those look compared to where they were 10 years ago. They just really speak well of our community.
Any other comments? All right, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that resolution is adopted. Can we hear the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-134, appointing Paul Johnson as a full-time Public Works Department employee at an hourly rate of $21, effective hire date October 16, 2023, with a 12-month probationary period.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Is this a replacement?
Yes, we have a employee, Mr. Mott, that left. So this will be replacing Mr. Mott. This guy currently works for St. Clair Public Works Department. And he's also a St. Clair firefighter.
EDL?
He does not.
Any other questions?
He's pushing over for...
Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes, and that resolution is adopted. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-135, designating Fairfield Township Roads for bid on the attached paving estimate list as Attachment A to be certified for funding upon the awarding of a contract as determined by the Butler County Engineers Office with a cost not to exceed $1,261,965.23.
Let's adopt.
Second, because I have some questions. I'll second this so we get a discussion. I'm not sure, so if we approve this resolution and the bid goes out and it comes in under this amount, are we obligated to accept those bids and then pay the project? Or, because 1.261... That's sticker shock to me. I don't, I haven't asked anybody else. That's a lot. That's usually more than we spend.
That's a lot more than we usually spend.
Well, you're paving a lot more roads, too, on this request than we have in the past.
Okay.
You're adding $448,000 difference from what we did, that they just finished up last week for this year. So the thinking behind this, if you look at the list here, Course Jesse's Way, that's one whole, what I would call, community. And then when you look at Jerry Terrace, Christine Drive, One the Way. And then the section of Armston Avenue that I have, last year we paved Vonney Vale. So if we pave those streets there, that completes that whole area of Schaefer's subdivision. And then the Sarah Court, Alyssa Drive, James Place, Fayette, or Lrenda, those are the remaining streets in the, I believe that's still considered Schaefer subdivision in the area behind Home Depot.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bennett, I apologize for interrupting you. Could you just repeat those street names you just referenced?
Was I just referenced?
Sarah, Alyssa?
Sarah Court, Alyssa Drive, James Place, Fayette.
Okay. And Lrenda?
Lrenda. Those are all in the area behind Home Depot. So those are the only streets that have not been paved back there in that area. So if we agree to pay that, that completes that whole subdivision back there.
And when did we pave that?
One, Drew Drive, and the others were paved, Mr. Birding, I want to say three years ago, four years ago. I could be wrong with that.
That's okay. Thank you.
And these streets are probably original.
Correct.
Have not been done since they were built.
So then, I had a couple calls on Lakebrook Court and Lakebrook Court. I did drive back in there, and they are in pretty bad shape as far as leading overall paving. I do remember when Mr. Bishop was here, the majority of all those side streets back there were black matted, and in my opinion, I feel like they're holding up rather well. And then as you move on down to the Maple Crest Drive, we're basically going from Liberty Fairfield to Maple Crest Court. That's just a short stub coming in off of Liberty Fairfield. And then the other part is the complete part of Maple Crest Court, starting at 4150 Hit Review Drive. So those two areas are in pretty bad shape back there. And then the remaining Creekside Way and the Old Mill Court, Mill Creek Court, Pebble Ridge Court, Maidstone Court, Stone Mill Way, Millview Court, Old Stone Court, and Mill Pond. We can either pave all of that, that completes that whole large area back there behind, back in the Walton Pond area. So that would have covered everything from Route 4, basically all the way up to Rochester. So I understand it's sticker shock, but the thing of it is, is you're adding, I don't know what I added up here, how many more streets than what we've paved in the past. But I feel that we need to be, not that we haven't been in the past, but my honest opinion, I feel this is the amount that we need to be spending yearly because, you know, by the time we try to make it to getting to where everything's been paved, you know, we're not going to make it if we continue spending $800,000. So the point that I'm trying to get is, you know, you start spending a little bit more money now than by the time that, you know, typically we're getting 10 years out of the road. You see, you get 20 years out of the road. It's just like everything else, it's not as good quality as it was years ago. So if you go back and you look over all the paving, I've basically got everything done, Bond Speedway completed, all the way down off of Canal Road, we call it Birdland off of Higgins Road, all that's been taken care of. So I'm basically starting to come this way. You got Fairfield Falls off of Liberty Fairfield. There should be no need that we need to do anything in there. So I feel like we're making headway if we do this. You know, and then possibly next year, we have Green Crest subdivision. I mean, it has never been paved. It's been black matted twice that I know of. And when we go to do this, I know in the past, you know, you go in, you pave the main thoroughfare, we didn't do the side streets, the golden sex streets. To me, if we're going in like Green Crest, we need to go in and wipe out the whole subdivision, pay the whole subdivision. When you don't do the side streets, it's like painting half a wall. So like I said, I understand it's sticker shock. You know, prices apply. This is probably going up a third of what we've paid. But that's my opinion. That's my suggestions for the payment.
What are the budget implications? So you see, what's the funding mechanism to make this work?
Absolutely, and I did get a legal opinion. Since we separated, I don't know if you recall, we separated the jet funds out of the general funding, made it its own fund number. We have never touched that money, that's at 3.4 million. So I did get a legal opinion that if the board decided to spend this amount, that we could use the jet fund. So that's what I would recommend. And we bring in, I mean, it replenishes rapidly, and of course, eventually the jet does go away, it terminates. But right now, that money is there. And not, but I don't believe it's appropriated, so we would have to amend appropriations.
That is true.
Trustee McAbby, opinion on this?
Well, I'd say we use our regular road funds first, and then we're using the jet money for...
We don't have any. We won't have any left. The road fund sustains itself with employees and materials and stuff.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Well, if it's 10 cents, spend 10 cents and go to the jet fund.
We depleted, we went, I suggested this...
This money won't be spent until next year. So there'll be money in there again before then, but I hear what you're saying.
I was going to say, especially since we laid that inside millage. So I don't think, I honestly don't think we'll have anything left because there are times that payroll barely makes it before we get our settlement.
To me, it's same difference. You know, you're using that for the road department, same difference. I hear what you're saying.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate you explaining this to me. It's not just a number. It's an organized plan.
It's a strategy.
And your words have convinced me, my opinion. I appreciate that. It's, when I read that amount, there's no way possible. But now that you explain that the strategic plan behind it, that it is better to do it now than wait, then I'm in favor of this. So thank you, Mr. Bennett, for taking the time to explain it to me and help me understand more.
Thank you.
Any questions? Do we need to change the way that the motion is read? If we're going to use jet funds?
I personally did not put a fund on the resolution because we hadn't done the budget yet. So I hadn't discussed with you guys or Ms. Vonderhor where to charge it. So I did not put a fund. So I can make a note in the many minutes that we would like the jet fund, and I'll make sure it gets budgeted there.
Okay.
And again, we're not spending this money today. We're just putting it out for bid.
Absolutely, right. Right, so I guess we don't have to amend appropriations because it won't be spent until next year. I'll make sure I appropriate it.
Great. All right, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
What about the pavement work, concrete work? Where's that at?
Well, that's...
I didn't see a resolution for that.
Right, I was waiting to get the approval on this before I go out. Right, exactly. Well, I'll go out and get a tally of what needs replaced, and then I'll bring that back and we'll put it out for bid. Go for it.
November?
Should, yes.
And that resolution is adopted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Can we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 23-136, budget commission and authorizing the necessary PAC studies and certifying them to the county auditor.
I move to adopt resolution 23-136.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Do you want explanation of this?
Yes.
Thank you, I'll do a reference.
Okay. We have not in the past that we could find, did a resolution to authorize rates like this. When I got this resolution, I did ask the person at the county why this year, and we haven't in the past, and he did not respond. I reached out to a few fiscal officers who said, well, we do it every year. And I'm like, okay, so I thought better to go ahead and do it and have it signed. I wonder if it's because of the revaluation and then not taking the inside millage increase for next year that it's required. But it went out to all the townships, it went out to the parks. So I thought, might as well get it done and signed. I mean, it's not like we have a choice. We can't not accept the rates. So I wanted to go ahead and just put it on here and get it signed, send it to the county. And I would like to know why this year, all of a sudden, we have to approve it as a resolution we have in the past, but I didn't get that answer, so...
This is what we used to do every July.
In July?
This is...
But they don't have the rates till like October.
We would do that, and then we would... Now, the rates that are on here, is this the rollback rates so that we don't collect more than what we said we would go on?
Yes, yes. So I just know that the resolution that came from the county said that we needed it approved before November 1st. So I added it to the agenda, and if I get an answer of why now, I will certainly let you know.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
But again, this is making sure that we're accepting, we're going to collect the same amount of money in those two or three funds that we collected last year. We're not passing on the new valuation to the taxpayers in the township.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. We have the final resolution, please.
Resolution 21-137, declaring nuisance and ordering abatement on the properties listed below and further authorizing the zoning administrator to initiate complaint. Properties include 2533 Shape and All Court for Vegetation and 6191 Hollyberry Lane for Vegetation.
Let's adopt.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Is either one of these a place? Probably not, but I received a letter in the mail about somebody complaining about, and I think everybody was copied. That was on...
On Arona Court.
On the court.
That's it. Sorry, that's in legal proceedings.
Okay.
It's in court right now.
Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Yes. Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
And that motion, I'm sorry, that resolution is adopted. Announcements, Fairfield Township Fire Department Open House is Saturday, October 14th, from 12 noon to 3 p.m. Fairfield Township trustees will meet in executive session to conduct interviews for new fire chief on October 16th at 7:30 and October 17th, starting at 6:30. The travel, the school travel plan meeting, public meeting at Fairfield East Elementary School is Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, from 4 to 6 p.m. Butler Tech Fairfield Township Campus Career Fair, which, it's a special meeting on, sorry.
No, I just said Fairfield is...
Okay. Fairfield Township Career Fair, which Fairfield Township will be participating in, is Wednesday, October 25th, 2023, not 2033. Maybe they'll have one in 10 years. Treat Street at Bridgewater Falls on Saturday, October 28th, 2023, from 2 p.m. to 4 p.m. Let's hope for great weather for that. Trick or Treat is Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. Let's hope for good weather for that, too. And offices are closed for Veterans Day holiday Friday, November 10th, 2023. And the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees' next regular meeting is Tuesday, November 14th, at 7 p.m. Board members, comments? Trustee McAbby?
We have Veterans Day, what, we got on the rest, I missed it.
No, I was thinking that, too. We have the ceremony coming up, the date.
It's on the 9th, isn't it, Thursday, the 9th?
Yeah, it's the day before, I believe. I just want to confirm that.
That's a parade, right?
Well, yes, we're working on our parade route, and... Yes, it is on the 9th. So we, I believe it'll be 11 to 1 again, but we're still working out the logistics. We meet with the veterans group Thursday of this week, Yes, it is on the ninth. So we, we, I believe it'll be eleven to one again, but we're still working out the logistics. We meet with the veterans group Thursday of this week, and two of the members are working on the parade. And then Chuck and I are working on speakers and the program, and so Fred Flaherty has sent us his contacts and tasked us with that, and then I think George Bryan's and someone else, and Fitzsevens are taking care of the parade. So yeah, so the two-part component, the principals have been and will be contacted again, et cetera, similar to prior years.
Great. Any other comments?
Maybe recognize the former Butler County State Senator Gary Kates is in the audience. He's got a whole list of things that he's done in the past, but he's in the audience. That's you, Rob.
And Mr. Kates is currently the Butler County Central Committeeman for the state of Ohio, correct?
Great. Any other comments? Trustee Markhamay?
I do. I think we need to fine tune one of our processes. It has come to my attention that currently, we as trustees are utilizing different processes in which to obtain information from our various departments. And I would recommend that we, when we as trustees need to get information, that we put that through to Mrs. Von der Har, and then she serves as a clearinghouse in order to consult with different departments to get that information to the trustees that, that happen to need it. When we don't do that, when we go directly to staff, it causes them to have concerns, it causes them to have some distress over getting these requests. And I think that it also keeps the communication loop from circling back so that everybody kind of knows what's going on. So I would recommend that we do two things. If we need information, that we put that information to Mrs. Von der Har, and then she would go to, say, the fiscal office and ask them to gather that information. Again, so that she's in the loop on it, and so that Mrs. Schultz is on the loop on it, and that way everybody knows what's coming. And then I would also recommend that we as trustees, if, that we keep our communications, like if I needed to get some information from one of the chiefs, that I, I can call them. But I should also advise Mrs. Von der Har that that conversation has taken place, so again, that we are all on the same page and we're working together as a team, and we are not causing undue stress to different departments that, that might be called upon to produce different information. So I think that would help us to have better township operations, better communication, and it would help us to, to get things in a more appropriate manner.
Great. Appreciate the input. Anything else?
The other thing that I would add is that if, to kind of put a little bit, we can try this on a trial basis right now, I would ask that staff, if we are, if we do ask for information from you, deny it and say that it has to go through Mrs. Von der Har. And we could even put teeth into that that says, if you provide that without it going through Mrs. Von der Har, that unfortunately gets written up. Not that I want anyone written up, but I want to make sure that we are routing through the proper chain of command in order to get the information that we require.
I understand where you're coming from. I, to deny information to a trustee might be pretty.
I don't want information denied to a trustee. That's not the ask.
Okay.
At all. That is absolutely one hundred percent not the ask.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
That's not what I'm saying at all. The ask is that it be routed through Mrs. Von der Har so that she can route that to the appropriate departments.
Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you said that if, if a trustee asks a staff member for information, that staff member should deny it.
Well, let me clarify why.
Okay.
Because I don't want staff to be put on the spot to have to produce something without it going through the administrator.
Okay. So the staff member could.
They need to, them forward that to Mrs. Von der Har so that they can have a discussion and then provide the information.
I understand now. I'm sorry, I just, I misunderstood you. I was trying to.
No, I want people to get the information they need, but I want it to go through the proper channels.
Okay.
And the chain of command.
Okay. All right, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, anything else? Okay. I just want to, again, thank Mr. Bennett for clarifying the road for me. I know before we've driven roads and you've pointed things out, and I appreciate you getting me off the ledge with understanding that, that, that ask. So on a side note, you know, October is, is breast cancer awareness month. You'll notice I'm wearing pink eye and pocket square as I do. I just want to draw attention to that. Hopefully, if you're out and you view this recording, and you're a female resident or someone, just encourage your female loved one to go get checked out for breast cancer to make sure that you are around for years to come. Because a lot of times, the women in the household are the ones that hold the household together, and we don't want to lose you, so please go get checked out and make sure that you stay around with your loved ones for a long time. So I just want to draw that to your attention.
You know, for future reference, we might be able to sponsor a mammogram here in the parking lot. I think there's a lot of hospitals that have that mobile unit that come around, so maybe we could get something at Bridgewater Falls or maybe even here.
Okay. Next item is I move that the board go into executive session in accordance to O R C one twenty-one point twenty-two G six, G one, sorry, to discuss employee compensation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? There may or may not be action to follow executive session. Ms. Schultz, we call the roll, please.
Trustee Burden.
Yes.
Trustee Markhamay.
Yes.
Trustee McAdie.
Yes. And that motion passes. We move into executive session at eight thirty-six P M. Thank you, everyone.
Hi. How you doing? Michael Burden. Nice to meet you. What's your name? Mabeyam. Nice to meet you. What are you here for tonight?